I'd like to call to order the June 27th special meeting of the school committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Dais.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Larve.
Here.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Citizens input tonight is supposed to stick strictly to what's on the agenda, but I'll entertain a motion to waive the rule so that the seven people can address the committee tonight.
Motion still made.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Deb, call the roll on waiving the rules for the...
Ms. Aguirre.
I have a question.
Mr. Aguirre.
Do you know what they're talking about?
Yes.
Do they have to sign up?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dais.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yeah.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. First one is Christine Charette Brogan. Three minutes, please, Christine. Thank you.
Thank you for making the exception that allows me to speak. Good evening. My name is Christine Charette Brogan. My name may sound familiar to some of the school committee members, and I have previously sent each elected member of the school committee and Mayor Coogan an email regarding the mold issue at Laterno Elementary School, addressing just some of my many concerns. I wish to thank Mr. Kevin Aguirre, Mr. Colin Deans, for taking the time to respond to my email of June 11th. In full disclosure, and far more than name dropping, I am the daughter of Joseph Martin's deceased, school committee member 2008 to 2019. I know from supporting my father through all of the bi-yearly election campaigns and my family being very close and mutually supportive, much of what it takes to sit there on the stage as a respected official and be responsible and approachable school committee member. I am also the proud grandparent, very involved, of three Laterno Elementary scholars. I am here tonight to express my deep concern about the ongoing mold issue at Laterno and the lack of transparency surrounding this issue. The presence of mold at any educational institution above the normal green amount for credible testing is cause for concern. Testing results by envirobiometrics from samples obtained on June sections showed eight types of mold, 10 times the normal green level of, and one particular type of mold at 100 times the normal level. These are just the June testing results. There are six other PDFs full of information publicly available at Fall River Schools not org slash Laterno. What is not publicly available is the answer to the questions I posed in my previous email to the school committee members and Mayor Coogan. When did this mold issue stop? When was the school department became aware of this mold issue? Why was classroom eight, the classroom with the highest total fungal counts in October 23, not retested as one of the 11, yes, only 11 indoor locations retested in May of 2024? I have one additional question. When is the mold issue at Laterno Elementary School going to be added to the Fall River School Committee meeting agenda so that the school committee as a whole and the concerned public can truly be informed past some seven PDFs and a few brief parent square statements from Principal Saban? I urge the school committee to get involved and work collaboratively with Laterno parents, Laterno teachers, Principal Saban, and the appropriate school department employees to address the issues of mold at Laterno or any other school department building swiftly and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll need a motion to waive the rules for the second speaker.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Aguirre.
Just a... A person just asked a question, so I think we should just at least try to get some answers from the superintendent.
It's not on the...
So I can tell you, I can tell you that...
Mr. Aguirre, that's not on the agenda. Mr. Aguirre, that's not on the agenda. We're waiving the rules.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman.
With all due respect.
We waived the rules.
We waived the rules.
We waived the rules so that we could hear something.
Mr. Aguirre.
The lady asked a question.
Mr. Aguirre, we are gonna stick with what we did. We waived the rules for the people. It's citizens input. We have a specific special meeting agenda.
And if a person comes up in citizen input time and raises a question that we can give them an answer to, we should be able to answer it.
I believe...
Unless you're hiding something, you should answer it. I have an email in front of me. So I have an email in front of me. So the answer to the question, ma'am, is Monday, November 13th, 2023, we received an email from the superintendent.
Mr. Aguirre, I'm gonna end up, it's gonna, I'm gonna ask you to leave in a minute.
A point of parliamentary procedure.
My point of parliamentary procedure.
My point of parliamentary procedure.
We are talking about what's on the agenda.
And I doubt the ruling of the chair. We need to be able to address the issues that come up when they come up instead of hiding it and not putting it on the agenda. Mr. Dais asked you to put this on the agenda and you chose not to. Point of parliamentary inquiry procedure, I doubt the ruling of the chair.
Okay, I doubt, then let's be quiet for a minute. Keep talking, please.
Proceededly, let's take the vote.
We will take a vote. Mr. Assad, are we talking about what's on the agenda or anything?
My understanding is that the vote that we took just a few minutes ago was to allow citizens input to go beyond the, what is on the agenda with respect to specific items to discuss by the committee. I believe that would require a second vote.
I'll entertain your motion if you want to go off agenda.
I make a motion that we be able to respond to the issues at hand. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Ms. Pereira.
So I was under the impression, and I could be wrong, but when we received the emails after the last meeting, that I was told that we were gonna have, because we discussed whether we were gonna put it on the agenda for this meeting or the regular school committee meeting, and I believe that we had discussed, I had said that I thought it was a suggestion made, and I had said, I think, it'd be best started in a subcommittee that's a small group that can get their answers. Everybody can still go, it's still televised. As many people can show up as you want, it's not hindering anything, but then we actually get answers. Because what if the answer comes, and I'm just thinking ahead, what if the answer comes that, guess what, we can't put the kids back in that school? Well, we're not gonna solve that in a full school committee meeting, but if they figure that out in a subcommittee meeting, then they can organize what they're bringing back to us. So I thought that was it. I don't know.
It's on the motion. It's on the motion. Mr. Dais.
That's where I think it should be handled, so everybody can be here who wants to handle it.
I think we should all just take a deep breath. We have, we do have members of the public out there right now that do want answers. I don't think it would harm anyone that, we just ask superintendent just to give an update for the public on the information.
I agree with Mr. Dais at the end of citizens input, I'm with him, but I want to take a motion on Mr. Aguirre, I'm gonna take a vote, I'm sorry, on Mr. Aguirre's motion. Deb, please call the roll.
On the item. On the item before us.
You doubt the ruling of the chair, you doubt Mr. Assad, go ahead.
So the other piece of it, when I look at the agenda, we have a policy that's a school committee policy that's been in place for at least 10 years, in that, in that it states, including special meetings, every single agenda will show new business, and it will also show any issues that the superintendent could not predict within the last 48 hours. That's a policy of this school committee that's been in effect for over 10 years. The only reason why it's not here now is because, in my opinion, the leadership of this committee doesn't want to talk about these issues. That's what's the real issue here. And that's a policy of the school committee.
It's not here, Mr. Aguirre.
But it's a policy of the school committee and it's not being followed.
It's a policy of the charter that the city council will stay on the items on a special agenda. You have your motion, you doubted the ruling of the chair.
Is the city council here?
Mr. Aguirre, I said city charter. Mr. Aguirre.
But you just mentioned the city council.
I said the charter. I made a mistake. I'm sorry, I know you don't, but I did. The city charter clearly defines what the role of a special meeting is. I ask for a call of the roll because you made the motion.
Okay.
Now you want to still continue to talk? Could we call the roll, please?
Yes, because now I'm gonna challenge what you just said, because the attorney should have to weigh in on this as well, because school committee policy supersedes the city charter or any of those other things you're trying to figure out. And I'd like to get the attorney to talk about that as well.
Mr. Aguirre, I feel...
Ask Attorney Assad for the clarification, please. What takes precedent, a school committee policy or the city charter?
By law, the city charter.
Thank you, Mr. Assad. Again, let's, can we do the vote?
I disagree, so go ahead. Let's take the vote.
Obviously, Mr. Aguirre, you know more than anybody up here, anybody in the audience. My point is, you make a motion and then you change the motion. Can we please do a vote?
We can absolutely do a vote.
Okay, well then, let's do the vote. Thank you for your permission. Go ahead, Deb.
Yes.
We're voting on...
We're voting on Mr. Aguirre's doubting of the ruling of the chair, that we stay with the special meeting agenda.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dais.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. I don't know what we voted on with yes.
We're gonna discuss at the end of the...
At the end of the meeting, at the end of the public input...
That's not what the motion was.
At the end of public input, Mr. Pacheco will give us an update on the general.
A point of parliamentary inquiry, what was the motion to appeal the ruling of the chair? What was...
That's what the vote was.
It was.
And the appeal that I made was, I want to have an answer to the lady's question now. The next speaker might have a different question, and we should answer that question as well.
Mr. Aguirre, just so you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people are gonna talk about Laterno mold. If Mr. Pacheco can hear all their comments, I'm sure at the end of it, he can comment on everything that's said.
While I'm looking for the process, and the process we just took was, we doubted the ruling of your role that says we can't answer this young lady.
Then we are gonna make sure that Mr. Pacheco comes up and answers the questions.
So now we need another motion to say we're gonna talk about this after citizen input?
No, we'll do it at the end of citizens input. Haley DiMedeiras, I need a motion, she lives in Taunton.
Still moved.
Second.
Do we need a roll call, Deb?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr....
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dais.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yeah.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Ms. DiMedeiras, three minutes, please.
Good evening, I am Haley DiMedeiras, a first grade teacher at Laterno. I stood here at the last committee meeting expressing how sick I have become because of the lack of maintenance and follow-through with recommendations made once mold was identified in the building. In a ridiculous, short, three minutes' time, since this issue somehow didn't make it on the agenda to be discussed further, I want to go back to the beginning and provide you with the real details, since Mr. Pacheco has again provided inaccurate information, this time to the Fall River Reporter, stating that mold concerns were first brought to his attention in the winter. September 18th, our first staff meeting, I expressed my concerns with my principal and asked for air quality testing. September 24th, Mr. Simpson's first emailed the Kemp Pacheco stating two teachers were complaining about air quality. September 27th, I follow up with an email stating, many of us are getting sick with a nasty cough, myself included. I know of the following issues on the first floor alone. All classrooms smell, Room 2 has shampooed her rugs twice after being told that may be the issue, no change, she runs an air purifier all day. Rooms 9 and 10 had to throw away many items when returning from summer due to them being covered in mold. Room 9 has mold on ceiling tiles which conveniently have been removed just this morning. Cafeteria workers have mentioned scraping mold off of their walls. After receiving no response to that email, I again emailed Mr. Pacheco on October 4th, to which he responded immediately that they have scheduled testing to be completed by October 11th and results within five business days. To our surprise, these results were never shared with us because Mr. Pacheco claims they did a test he didn't ask for and he is unwilling to pay for said test. Although we did somehow find out that Room 2, who was told her rug may be an issue, had it removed because it was flagged as hot. It then took until October 23rd to test five classrooms. Laterno has 60 or more rooms that students and staff occupy throughout the building and day. Although Mr. Pacheco stated it would take five business days to get the results, it took 11 for us to receive this data. Room 21, 126 total fungi count. Room 2, 295 total fungi count. Room 10, 2,484 total fungi count with a 2,274 count concentrated in the Aspergillus penicillium species. Room 9, 2,611 total fungi count with a 2,316 count of Aspergillus penicillium. Room 8, 4,674 total fungi count with a 4,463 count of Aspergillus penicillium. That's three rooms, not one, not two, but three rooms above safe standards identified by the MTA as being below 500. Aspergillus is one of the five most dangerous mold species. One of the recommendations made states, additional dehumidifiers may need to be added to the interior to assist in controlling mold growth during the high humidity months of April through September. Well, here we are in peak humidity months with many classrooms not being retested and mold undoubtedly growing. When the Health and Safety Committee raised concerns about hosting summer school in a breeding ground, Mr. Pacheco's response was, he's not worried about summer school. How can you not be worried?
Hello? That's three minutes.
I make a motion that we waive the rules to let her finish.
Thank you. One paragraph, one paragraph, two sentences.
We'll take the vote.
Okay, let's take it.
Motion is made.
I need a second.
Continue.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This timeline only details from September to November, which is what I would consider the very beginning of the school year, not winter. I have so much more to share, but since I am limited to three minutes and already over, I must refrain. It is my strongest belief that Laterno is not safe for students or staff to occupy for summer school.
Next speaker, Junior Lee Johnson, Street, Fall River.
That was closer, Mr. Mayor. Hello, my name is Junior Lee, I reside in Fall River, have been employed by the FRPS for over a decade, and I'm a proud parent of two Fall River students. One is a senior at Derfie and the other one is an eighth grader. I am also a member of the FREA Health and Safety Committee. I am proud to inform you that the Laternos Health and Safety Committee has met with Superintendent and her team several times, resulting in some improvements to our school after months of our requests falling on deaf ears. Though much work has been done, the root of the problem remains undetected. I am embarrassed and quite frankly disgusted that the condition of our buildings and several others such as Green and Fonska has reached the point where it has caused severe health issues for our staff and our members of the FREA. I would like to draw your attention to the current Fall River Committee Policy Manual posted on the city's website. Section E, Buildings and Grounds Management, section EC, ECA states the following. Public schools, public school buildings and grounds are the greatest investments of the city. It is deemed in the best interest of the school department and city to protect the investment adequately. The school committee's most important function is to provide for the education of children, and it recognizes that the education of children is dependent upon many different factors, including a proper physical environment that is safe, clean, sanitary, and as comfortable and convenient as the facilities will permit and to use requires. Based on this policy, or let's call this your job description, you have failed as a committee. While you publicly argue over Fall River politics or should you buy a $6,000 dinosaur costume, critical issues such as the health and safety concerns of our students and educators in our districts remains neglected. This is shameful and unacceptable, as this is a serious matter that deserves your immediate attention. Regrettably, some of you decide, think that it wasn't, as this issue was not included on today's agenda despite a formal request by one of your committee members. Mr. Dais, Mr. Aguirre, thank you for your attention and commitment to getting to the bottom of this. To the rest of you, your failure to follow on or follow up and promptly address this concern continues to erode the credibility of this committee while jeopardizing the well-being of our community, much like the moldy walls in our schools. We respectfully and publicly ask that the FRPS follow through on its commitment to have Laterno thoroughly assessed by an independent and certified building assessor yet to be hired, and that all remediations recommended by the assessor be completed prior to the beginning of our upcoming school year. And finally, we request publicly that your ongoing collaboration with the FREA Health and Safety Committee to establish a comprehensive testing and maintenance schedule for all schools, not just Laterno. This is important for the long-term health and safety of all FREA members, and more importantly, to safeguard the city's most valuable assets, the students of Fall River, not just the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Aaron Medeiras, South Main Street, Fall River.
My name's Aaron Medeiras, I'm here today with my girlfriend Brittany to speak about the mold issue at Laterno Elementary School. Our oldest son attended Laterno from kindergarten to fifth, and our younger son is going into sixth grade, who has also been there since kindergarten. Since the beginning of this school year, the concern for mold in the school, specifically in a few classrooms, including my son's room, Room 8, has been discussed several times. After some tests, I don't have the exact figures, but students and staff are being exposed to dangerous levels of mold, specifically Aspergillus mold, one of the five most dangerous mold species. Children are being exposed to harmful toxins throughout the entire school day, which is causing harm to their health and safety. Children's safety is the absolute number one priority throughout the entire education system. Let me know if you disagree? No? Okay. That being said, this needs to be addressed through and through. We cannot carelessly approach this. We cannot take shortcuts. This is our children's health that we are talking about. This is not about funding, wages, curriculum, dinosaur costumes. This is about children's health, which is the number one priority for the entire school committee, every teacher, parent, and employee throughout the entire school department. Children's health and safety is the number one thing before anything. Now, from my understanding, that in some form of remediation, you know, replace carpets, they're able to get testing done, but of course, immediately after the testing, the mold levels would come down because everything was as clean, but basically, what I would expect is that this should be addressed through and through periodically. It can't just be cleaned up and tested after the cleanup, it should be remediated, tested, 90 days goes by, tested again, 90 days goes by, tested again, and follow through with it. Don't just clean it up, test it, oh, the mold levels are down, and move on with your life. It has to be a process. Sorry, let me continue where I was. Now, each and every one of you have a responsibility to protect our children, each and every single one of you. I understand it might not be your children or you being exposed to the harmful toxins, but you need to treat it as so. You need to treat it as if it's you being exposed and your children being exposed. No child should be exposed to that level of toxicity. Sorry, let me continue where I was.
Exactly.
Now, I understand... Sorry. Now, each and every one of you should be addressing the issue and following up on it. It shouldn't be just one person that takes it under their wing. Treat it as if it's your child being exposed. Now, to get into the specifics, my son has had constant respiratory issues for years. He's gotten tests for allergies from pulmonary specialists, respiratory specialists, nothing was diagnosed. He's had several excuse appearances, especially this year, and there's a very high likelihood that this mold issue could be causing a health issue for him. We can't determine that it is the mold that's what's causing him to become sick, but the symptoms absolutely line up to mold exposure. Regardless, no child should be exposed to that level of toxicity. To sum things up, it seems like this issue is being swept under the rug and pushed off, kind of like what a slumlord would do. We cannot clean and retest immediately, we must do multiple retests and really get to the bottom of it. It's not something that can be taken lightly, and shame on you if you don't take this seriously. Shame on you.
Thank you, Aaron.
One more minute, please.
Aaron, one more minute.
Someone who is genuine and actually cares about the well-being of our children, please take this under your wing and encourage your peers to do the same.
Thank you.
Last thing, if this continues to be ignored or approached with half effort, it will lead to the mold problem getting worse, leading to worse health issues, and eventually demolishing a school less than two decades old due to mold.
Thank you, Aaron.
When the taxpayers ask how this happened, we'll be sure to let them know that it was the negligence of our school committee. Last sentence. For the sake of our children's health and education, do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'll need a motion to waive the rules from Patucket.
Still moved.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dais.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Alex Bradley.
Hello, before speaking, I just want to say that I want to acknowledge what everybody else has said, and health and safety is absolutely the utmost important thing that everybody should be worried about, but I need to speak to my truth, I'm not in Laterno, so mine's a little bit different.
Could you speak more into the microphone directly?
Yeah, how's this? Is this okay? All right, sure. So first and foremost, I would just like to say that I love my job. I'm a pre-K teacher at Fonska, this is, I just completed my seventh year, and it seems like outsiders think we must not love or appreciate our jobs since we're fighting for a better contract and coming here with so much, you know, anger, I guess you could say, but it's because we love our jobs that we're coming here and fighting every day for a better contract. I want to be able to give my best self to my students, and how can we focus on teaching when we are worrying about how we're going to pay our bills the next month? Research overwhelmingly shows that students learn best when having fun, feeling loved, and feeling safe. It's hard to provide that environment for students when we ourselves don't feel valued, respected, loved, and safe. When I first decided that I wanted to become a teacher, everyone made sure to tell me that it was a low-paying job, and that never mattered to me because I was okay with making a humble living without excess. However, I didn't realize that what it actually meant is that I would struggle to make ends meet, and that I am not okay with. Every day that I walk into my school, I have a huge smile on my face and muster up all my energy to bring my best self to my students. I have a sort of a reputation around the school, and students and family in the community know me, love me, and appreciate that I look like an absolute ridiculous person just to make the kids smile every day. I assure you, this is not my natural hair color, I don't do it for fun, I literally do this just for the kids because it makes them smile. The way I present myself, the way I present my classroom, although it kind of looks like a unicorn found the reading rainbow, it's all because the kids appreciate it. Everything I do in my life, I do for the betterment of my students. I have three bachelor's degrees, one master's degree, and multiple endorsements and licenses. I am well-educated and hardworking, so why is it that I barely am scraping by? The school committee has made it clear that they think what we are asking for is ridiculous and over the top. However, I need you to take a look in the mirror and realize that the ridiculousness of our request is only due to the ridiculousness of the discrepancy in our pay compared to the pay in other districts. If you weren't paying us so poorly, we wouldn't need to ask for this much. We're not asking for a raise as much as we're asking for a pay correction. I drive 45 minutes to work each day and work with a community that is in high need and requires a lot of emotional exertion. People always ask me why I drive so far to make less than what I could make working almost anywhere else, and the reason is because I genuinely love our community and I love our kids and our families more than I could ever explain. Sorry. However, there comes a point, as a mother, I need to realize that what I'm doing isn't sustainable. All seven years of my teaching career, I have worked a second job, and I'm burning the candles at both ends. So this year, I finally quit that second job, and I had to take out of my pension because I couldn't afford groceries, and I'm not being hyperbolic. It's really bad. And just so you know, inflation is rising. We need to be paid better because I don't want to have to choose between teaching here and being a good mom.
Thank you. Next speaker, Heather Smith, Holland Street, Fall River. Three minutes, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I am going to try my best to do a good job. I did not really prepare something, but I did hear about the possibility of speaking about mold, and I feel very, it's very important for me to have a conversation around that today. I'm here today in support of the testing of schools for mold. I worked for the Fall River School Department for the last nineteen years. Eighteen of my years have been at Green. I have put in numerous complaints, starting in 2013, all of the times I was told it was checked, no mold. The room I was in, in Green, Room 102, was loaded with mold, and still is loaded with mold. Both my parents helped me set up in the year 2023, and when we walked into my room, everything was covered completely in mold. We had to throw my rugs away. Every year, they threw my rugs away, my rugs. Every year, I have to throw out countless supplies that I buy because they're destroyed from the mold. And when I was told by the custodians that there is no mold, as they're being, taking out my things to wash the mold off, the custodial staff is in no way the problem, but the administration is. And when I say administration, I'm talking about the principals and the people who say that they're testing for mold. I was told countless times that a gentleman was going to be testing my room. I don't believe that's ever happened. And Room 102 is probably similar to the lady from Laterno School, Mr. Maris. I'm certain of that. The truth is, the custodians knew that the rooms were not professionally checked. They were checked by somebody who worked for Fall River, and the mold was always something that we were not to talk about at the Green School. I've had numerous issues as well with my health, but since I've left Fall River and no longer teach here, I teach in New Bedford for many reasons, this being one of them. My health issues were real. I was coughing all the time. I had friends say, "Why, why are you always coughing? I don't smoke. It's not a smoker's cough." I wheezed, but I'd go home on vacations, and I'd be on the phone with friends, and they'd say, a specific friend was the one who brought it to my attention and said, "You know, Heather, I think you might have a problem with the school. You always cough, but you don't cough when you are like halfway through break." And that is true. And since I've left, I no longer cough. It is a real problem. Most importantly, I have been bringing this issue since 2013 to my school. Nobody has done anything about it. Only person who did something about it was myself. When I said to my custodians, "If we don't do something, the ceiling tiles are falling off. A child is going to get killed because one of these ceiling tiles is going to fall down and hurt them or kill them." They replaced my tiles, and I took videos because they didn't realize I was going to be there. I have pictures, videos of the countless amount of mold in the ceilings, and unless we address the problem and fix the problem, you can clean it all you want, but the health issues are not going to change. Thank you.
And finally, Rob Gorman, I believe he's from Brockton. Could I get a motion to waive the rules?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, my name is Robert Gorman. I come to you today as a teacher from BMC Durfee to discuss teacher autonomy. Now, it's not as life or death as mold, but next to compensation, the issue of teacher autonomy is one of the most brought up in relation to retention at our school. The connection between autonomy and retention may not be immediately obvious, so let me explain for you. At Durfee, we've adopted two curricula, Carnegie Learning and Open Say Ed for math and science departments respectively. In both the math and science departments, we have been told to teach both curricula with fidelity, and that seems to be the big buzzword, fidelity. In some cases, we've been told to execute the materials written to the best of our abilities. The implication being made when we're told to teach with fidelity is that very little of the material should be adapted and that it should be instructed as written. In the math department, we have been told to add additional mini lessons to teach blind spots as we come across them from time to time, but in science, I've heard accounts of strict fidelity being enforced, generally speaking. There are several issues with this approach. Both Carnegie Learning and Open Say Ed are meant to be adapted and supplemented, in some cases extensively. In Carnegie's case, look no further than Desi's own curate scores. Carnegie scored full marks on standards line, and I'll give you that, but only partially met expectations with classroom application. According to Desi, curricula that only meet expectations partially in this area should be supplemented or adapted substantively. In Open Say Ed's case, the curriculum's website, in addition to their PD representatives, state to the similar effect that it should be adapted or supplemented. For whatever reason, we are being cautioned against adapting and supplementing, reducing our classroom autonomy. I understand that as a school and turnaround, everyone is looking for the magic bullet that will improve state scores as soon as possible, but curtailing teacher involvement with their students' education, reducing our autonomy, is not the way, and I have the data to prove it. Per 2012 study that focused on the causes of mathematics and science teacher turnover, a big focus in this district, the strongest factor for teacher turnover in subjects that were state-tested, so this may even extend to ELA with as far as the MCAS goes, was the degree of individual autonomy held by classroom teachers. If we continue down this path of mistrusting teacher expertise in pursuit of a generalized cookie-cutter experience that isn't even recommended by the state or by curriculum vendors, turnover rates will continue and student learning will suffer. We got into this profession to teach, not to be live-action versions of edgenuity or glorified babysitters. We are highly qualified professionals that you are paying for our expertise, allow us to use that expertise to adapt and supplement per our students' needs. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a final one on Laterno. Claudia Montino, Deb from Fall River, Deb will read.
Hello. My name is Claudia Cutino Montero, and I am the mom of Leon Cutino Montero, a first grader now going into second grade at Laterno Elementary School. I was planning to attend today's school committee meeting, but unfortunately, I'm not able to, so I ask that you read my letter to all. Thank you in advance. I would like to stop by saying how upsetting it is that the mold issue at Laterno School has not been taken as seriously as it should be, and how our kids have been put in this unhealthy environment every single day of the school year with no regards at all to their well-being. The schools are supposed to be a safe place for the children physically, mentally, and health-wise, so this is not acceptable. The lack of communication regarding this has been minimal. The principal or the superintendent have not scheduled a meeting to talk to parents about it, and it seems as, it seems that there has been more effort to cover this up than to talk about it. I would like to ask the members of the school committee, how about if it was your kids in this situation? In a school where the mold levels were extremely high, what would you do? My son was sick various times throughout the school year. He had a rash on his skin, and I am pretty sure it could be related to the toxic environment and air quality in his classroom. My son was in Classroom Eight, and that was one of the worst in the school regarding the air quality and mold levels. They were absurdly high. They were moved once in November, then went back into the classroom, then four days out of the school ending, they were moved again, like they were, like that would make any difference at this point. This is ridiculous. This is outrageous. This is unacceptable. Please, to the people in the school committee, to the superintendent, do more and care more about our kids' health because it could be yours in this situation. If you cannot relocate these kids, then do, then do online classes. It was done during COVID, so I am sure it can be done again if necessary. My son will not be returning to Laterno School if this issue is not taken seriously and resolved. Do better.
Thank you. As I told the committee and the audience, Mr. Pacheco, could you give us any update you may have on what's going on with the mold at Laterno?
So I wish I had a lot of information. I have some information. Tomorrow morning, we're meeting with the MTA Suggested Environmental Group at 9:00 AM. Mr. Philip Terrell is coming down. We will walk the building. We will walk the epicenter, so to speak, of where we have the issues and come up with a plan moving forward in 008 and then the rest of that particular area and then throughout the school. We will spend as much time there tomorrow as he has available and then come up with steps moving forward. We also have a reschedule of the gentleman, Mark Stevens, who works for Armstrong Equipment on the air purifiers, to come down and check on the installation and also to give us the suggested maintenance piece of it, and then moving forward whether we have the newest addition of the units, and then subsequently put the order in for the rest of that particular area on the first floor and moving forward, hopefully the whole building very shortly. Short piece on the humidistats. We are going to have a unit installed tomorrow that we have in stock and set it. It'll be in Room 2008, so we can adjust that particular piece, see what we have for information that we gather through that piece. In the meantime, order an additional seven to ten units for that particular wing on the building, and then moving forward, they will be installed in the entire building. We also have Mr. Green, who has done a fabulous job in all of those rooms, preparing for potential summer school at the request of the Health and Safety Committee. We would move those classrooms elsewhere in the building, and to be totally honest, if no one's comfortable in teaching in that building, then we will move them elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. I would ask, then we get back to the agenda, when will you, you'll have your meeting tomorrow? Can you give us an update after?
As soon as I leave the gentleman. I'm hoping that we can sign an agreement moving forward with everything else. He's very interested in coming down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia?
So what is the process for the, to sign the agreement with the consultant? Is that a contract that has to, is there, based on dollar amounts, or do you have the authority to just, or the superintendent?
So a certain dollar amount, I'll obviously be able to, you know, pull the trigger immediately. I don't know what, I don't know if I'm getting an allocat menu from him as to what he suggests and what, moving forward, he wants to do. I don't know that. I won't know until tomorrow. I had about a ten-minute conversation with him on Tuesday, and looking forward to meeting him tomorrow and see where we move forward. So the hope is, is that I can, within a certain dollar range, do this with this company, and then if that is exceeded, then we will, I will come to the committee if I need to get more authority.
And what is, and what is that dollar range now that we increased it?
So there are certain consultants that we can hire, up to $30,000, that are exempt from the bidding process. I'm not quite sure if his cooperation fits into that, and we will check on that as soon as I get some numbers from him.
I mean, one of the reasons why I supported Mr. Dias's request to put this on the agenda would be, these are the questions that we would need to expedite this issue. Like, I have a ton of questions that I wrote down. Just looking at this one, as far as like an emergency, when there's expenditures and stuff, I think that we need to leave this room tonight, whether it's now, although we didn't put new business on, so we can't, because the agenda's screwed up, we can't do a lot of stuff, so I don't know the mechanism for it. But I think that we shouldn't be leaving here tonight without giving you or the superintendent, basically, but the authority to do something. If the thing comes out for $50,000, we're going to come back. So I just think it's, I am, and I'm not blaming anyone at all, I just think that this has become a real bigger mess than I ever anticipated personally as one member of the committee. The school committee has roles and responsibilities, and one of those roles is not the day-to-day operation of the school department. That falls under the superintendent and her designees. So we don't have the authority, just for the edification of the public, to order any test, do anything individually. So really, what we can do is, at these meetings, we can speak, we can try to have you send us pictures, we can try to push the envelope for you, but we can't do anything individually. But with that being said, the information that the people presented is very telling that we have some serious issues here. The most alarming piece for me was when I heard last week that we also had green school issues, that we heard nothing about on the school committee. So I had to send an email to the superintendent, say, "Now, is the green school getting tested?" So now, yes, the green school's getting tested, so now, does the green school have mold? The young lady who spoke, that's a horrifying story about the green school from 2013. I don't, there's just so much information that just keeps coming. Somebody told me today, I don't know who, it was at Fonsica I heard, "Now, does Fonsica have mold?" Like, it's just really totally blowing my mind, and that's why I was in favor of, and I emailed everyone to say that, I'm in favor of having an outside person come in, be responsible for the whole thing, and I think that's happening, but time is going by. So whatever we got to do here today, I think we should be doing to make sure that we can actually get this done. There's just so many issues with the mold. The summer school, I said it point-blank, and I'll say it here, there's no way we should be having summer school at that school when we have mold there. Just not. And I know there was agreements and stuff, I just, we can do it. I just think we're asking for trouble because it just keeps on, it's more schools, and I'm not a mold expert by no means, but the next meeting that we have, I want to have a consultant there that's in charge, just come up before us, because, Mr. Pacheco, you're not an expert on everything either. You can only do what you can do. So I want to-
The more I know, the more, the less I know, believe me.
But what I'm saying is, I want the person, once we get hired, so that that person's, I think, responsible for clear everybody's minds about it and to just make sure everybody's safe, because whoever it was that said, you know, "Treat it like your own family," of course we do, but we don't have that authority necessarily. So that's why I'm a little aggravated with getting all of this stuff at this point. This has been going on all year. I personally think we have HVAC system problems in this district for a long time. I've asked today for five different items from, I want years of information, I want school dude information, I want to know who was requesting stuff, because I want to see what's happening, because I think this has become a big, huge mess. We know we had the issue with spraying ceiling tiles, for instance. I talked to you about that. You shouldn't spray paint ceiling tiles. Now, to your credit, you stopped that. How long was that going on for? What was the issue? We had that other issue at Tansey School that I brought to the superintendent's attention, that there was black fur behind a wall that a carpenter said to somebody else, "Just cover it up." I told you that three, four months ago. I still don't have an answer on whether there was or there wasn't. These type of things can't happen. School committee doesn't have this authority. I bring it to the superintendent, and we can only rely on them to do what they have to do, but the only question I would ask is, if, however it works out, if there is a vote of this committee that's needed to have you, via the superintendent, be allowed to sign that contract, I'm ready to vote for it, yes. I don't care what it says at this point, but logistically, you guys got to work that out. With that, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. I know we discussed at the Health and Safety Meeting last Thursday, there's going to be a comprehensive assessment done. Is that assessment, you want that to cover anywhere where there's, anywhere where there's children, correct? Where there would be children?
And as far as-
Anywhere, like, anywhere there could be children present in the school that-
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that covers every classroom, any like gym area?
It covers the entire building.
Okay, so every classroom covered, okay. And just a quick question for the superintendent, just when, when does summer school start for Laterno if it hasn't started already?
Monday.
Monday.
Okay, so we're trying to get this done this week?
It won't be done, it won't be done for Monday, so we will move students elsewhere out of that area if that's the will, and if it isn't, and we need to shut it down, then we will move them into another building.
Okay, yeah, so this, and you mentioned it, but just to reiterate, you're in a close step with Health and Safety Committee. If there's any classrooms they don't feel comfortable placing students in, those students will be placed there?
Exactly.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
If I could, one second, Mr. Chairman. Just on Mr. Agia's point, the blame is here. The blame is not the superintendent. The superintendent is at 417 Rock Street, can't be everywhere. So the blame is the person who operates this particular piece, and it's, and it's right here. This is not, I don't pass the buck. I don't expect it to be people who work for FNO to take that responsibility. The custodians do a heck of a job, year in and year out, trying to do everything they can. So the issue is right here, and with that being said, I will do whatever I can to get this thing ready for August. I agree 100% about the full assessment of the building. I'm hoping that Mr. Terrell will, and I tomorrow, will come up with a plan that he can put in, into, put, you know, pen to paper, come up with that and move forward, and we will do whatever we can or whatever we need to do to procure what we need to procure.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira?
Really quick, because a couple of things were already addressed. How long is summer school?
Five weeks, I think.
Five weeks?
Maybe.
So, because my initial thing was, as soon as this happened, I immediately, why do we have kids there? The test came back, again, why do we have kids there? I don't personally feel comfortable having anybody in that school this summer. Now, I don't know anything about mold, so when people come up and give me numbers and figures, as much as I appreciate, and I'm listening to it, I have no clue. I know that it's not healthy. I used to be a nurse, that much I know. It's not good to breathe in. I also know you can't see it, right? So how do we know where it is? We know it's there. It could be creeping around, and I'm not joking, I'm serious. So if we feel, or the safety board or the school or what have you feels that it's safe just to move to different parts of the building, maybe I don't know enough, but my thought process is, we need to have a subcommittee meeting ASAP, we need to have every, all the important people on board, and we need to find a different location probably for the remaining five weeks. I don't, I don't know what the plan is, maybe everybody already has a spot. I just think that, number one, we, I don't think that in good conscience, we can, we can have them go into that building. That's my opinion. And it's just my opinion, again, I am not an expert. And then the last thing I was going to say, just to reiterate what my colleague over here and over there said, if there's anything we can do to expedite it for the superintendent tonight, if there's anything we can do to move something forward, I don't know if you have to go out for bid for these guys or what we can do, but I think we'd like to just kind of do that now, and let's get that ball rolling so that your hands aren't tied and you're able to like act quicker than having to come back.
So if I could, and there is one thing, I should have mentioned that, Ms. Agia, the one thing is, waive the $25,000 reason for me to come back to the committee, and- the one thing is, waive the $25,000 reason for me to come back to the committee, and we could sign a contract with them, with the consultant, no matter what that price is.
Say that one more time.
Just one issue, just one issue with this item.
What, can you-
Can you say that one more time?
So, if we could waive the $25,000 need to come to the committee-
Okay, motion to waive the $25,000.
Just on this one issue-
Just on this one issue.
Just the consultant-
Just the consultant-
So that we can sign a contract.
So that we can expedite and sign the contract.
I'm not saying it's gonna be, I just-
We have a motion-
Second.
And a second to waive the rule, so that Mr. Pacheco can take the necessary movement tomorrow to, to attempt to tackle the issue at Laterno. I do have one more question here, Ms. Larabee.
So, Mr. Pacheco, is this, is this meeting tomorrow going to include Green and include Fonska?
He's going to Laterno tomorrow.
Just Laterno tomorrow?
Yes.
So, as the facilities chair, so after tomorrow's meeting, we're gonna connect, right?
If we, if we could schedule a meeting for next week, that would be perfect.
We will make that happen.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to waive the rules, so that Mr. Pacheco can take-
May.
Yes, um, and this, um, and this, um, on Ms. Pereira's point, um, the only reason, if the health and safety committee, I was assuming they were okay, just from my understanding from the last meeting, with moving students into safer classrooms. If they feel, I feel the same way, if they feel the building should be shut down, then I'm, I'm in lockstep with that. But again, I think we should, um, listen to, um, the boots underground, which is the safety committee. But I yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dias. So, we have a motion to waive the requirements, and a second, Mr. Aguiar.
So, when I bring up issues about the agenda and how it gets created and the things that are not on it, this is the perfect reason why. Because everyone sitting here wants to vote on a motion, and I don't see any mechanism in this agenda that allows us to do that.
Mr. Assad? Right, Mr. Assad. Mr. Aguiar's concern is, we don't have the ability to waive the rule to allow Mr. Pacheco to take the necessary steps.
Well, from what I'm, I'm hearing, if this was a, a, an outside motion that was made, that was not as serious as it is right now, and it sounds like it's, you have an emergency, you have a situation where on Monday, there are students that are, are scheduled to be in that classroom, I think in that particular situation, there would be a waiving of the rules. And I do not believe that this would be something that we would be violating any, any law, or the open meeting law with respect to it. This is a situation where action has to be taken today.
Thank you.
We're not taking action on the moving of the children. That's the problem.
It's contingent on what he gets tomorrow.
No. Mr.-
No.
I'm not gonna have, I misunderstood.
I'm, I will not, excuse me, Mr. Aguiar, I didn't mean to stop. I'm not gonna have an answer tomorrow from this gentleman, other than the fact that he's gonna take the job, not take the job, and I'm gonna try and get a ballpark figure from him, so that we can enter into a contract and he can get started. I'm sure that he's not gonna walk in the door tomorrow and just wanna talk. He's gonna wanna walk around. He may wanna take some tests. I, I don't know that. I'm hoping that he may, but I can't, I can't, I don't have anything to go by. So, what I'm saying is, tomorrow, that is gonna happen, and I would like to be able to say to him, come up with a proposal. I don't know if he's gonna get back to me, if he can give me a verbal, um, tomorrow, so that I can talk to the superintendent and figure out where we're going. I, I don't wanna split the bit, the bid, you know, so if he sells me, well, I can, I can work, I can do this for 15,000 for now, and then we'll have to re-approach. I think the consultant piece and the nature of environmental situations would allow me to do that, so I, I don't know. And I would have to make calls on that, um, to the state, to find out if I could enter into a deal with them, knowing full well that it won't cover the full cost of what we're doing.
Superintendent Potts?
If I could just weigh in on, you're right, on the children, if we could, um, I have to meet with Mr. Pacheco, Dr. Curly, we have to look at where there's space, and certainly make a decision tomorrow in regards to where we could house summer school for the Laterno children. If we have to delay that by a week, or a few days, we will, so that we can make those arrangements. But, um, tomorrow, I could notify the committee, we can make that determination as to what we will do in regards to moving the Laterno children, so that they can have a safe summer school.
If, if I also could, one second, to the, to the superintendent, the, it's not only the, the, they do have outside agencies who will use that school, so-
Okay.
It'll affect them too. Our students, but it'll affect them.
So, the point that I was just making of the agenda is, what Attorney Assad said was an emergency was related to the children starting on Monday. That's not what this is about. So, my concern is just that, we, we know what we wanna do. And I'm just reiterating it, because every time I bring up something about, we're not doing the agendas properly. The leadership is not doing the agendas properly. I get my eyes rolled, I can see it from that side, saying, "Oh, he's, there he's going again, there he's going again." But these are the things that are the reason. So, we have to do agendas following school committee protocol that says, any issue that did not, which is in the writing, which has been in existence, but we don't dot our i's and cross our t's as a leadership on this school committee. That's why we're in this quagmire right now. Because we, we wanna vote for something, but there's no mechanism to vote for it. The superintendent, as I said earlier, is in charge of the day-to-day operations. The superintendent has every right to just move those children without us saying it. I emailed a week ago, and I said, "I don't know who the hell made that decision," exact quote, "but no answer until we come here tonight. Now, all of a sudden, we can change." We could've made that decision a week ago. So, I'm a little frustrated by that particular piece, but I think the superintendent can do that anyway. The issue is just the contract. So, I think we're, we're basically stuck, like we were last time, saying, when Mr. Pacheco comes back and says, "We, we need to go above a certain number, we need to have a special meeting if we're gonna follow protocol and policy," and say, "This is when it's gonna be here to do it." And I'm ready to, to come to the meeting. But I don't see any way that we can do what we all wanna do, because of the screwed-up nature of this agenda again. And that's what I feel, and I don't think there's a right to do it, there's a way to do it. So, I yield.
All right, so we have a motion to waive the cap on money, so that Mr. Pacheco can take the necessary steps to address the issues at Laterno.
Deb, please, I have a motion, a second.
It's an illegal vote, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mr., um-
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Assad said that we have the right to do this under a health and safety-
Because the children are coming in on Monday. He didn't say it was for a contract.
Deb, please call the roll.
The whole point, the whole point, if we can think about this this way-
Is the kids.
The reason the school is unsafe is because of the mold. We need the contract done quickly, so we can fix the school quickly, so we can get our kids back in safely. It's all related to the healthcare of the kids.
Okay, all right.
If you think it's illegal, even though the high paid attorney doesn't abstain.
Listen, I'm, I'm done. We're gonna vote.
Can we get Mr. Assad to weigh in, please?
We have a motion, a second.
Can we get, can we get Mr. Assad to weigh in?
Mr. Assad, please.
Point of parliamentary procedure.
Mr. Okay.
Point of parliamentary procedure.
Deb, can you?
Point of parliamentary procedure.
What's the parliamentary procedure, Mr. Aguiar?
There is no mechanism on this agenda currently, the way the open meeting law is related, that we can actually vote on this right now. The emergency that Attorney Assad said was children coming in the building on Monday, and that's not what this vote is. So, this would be a violation of the open meeting law if we did it this way. Now, I know we all wanna do it, but it's the fact. It's a violation of the open meeting law, because of the screwed-up agenda.
Saying it's a violation of the open meeting law.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, but you let everybody talk. We know that, but you wanted to have this conversation, so here we are.
You can ask to be recognized-
Hey, Mr. Assad, okay, hold on, Mr. Aguiar. Mr. Assad's gonna give you your answer that you've been able to.
Now, we're trying to do something about it, we're trying to prevent that.
You knew it wasn't on the agenda, but you wanted to talk.
Ms. Pereira.
Oh, I thought you looked at it.
No, 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 Mr. Assad was gonna explain to him why we can vote.
No, my understanding is, if the issue is about the open meeting law, this would not, this would not apply. This is a, a situation where, is something on the agenda or not on the agenda, in a special meeting, everyone understands very clearly that the items are subject to what is on the agenda, and it doesn't go beyond that. However, there was a, a vote taken with respect to, um, I'm sorry, a public input, in which this issue was brought up. The individual from the school department, Mr. Pacheco, was allowed to address it. We have a situation where it's not something that could be put off. It is something that has to be done as quickly as possible. We have students and teachers and other individuals who are scheduled to go into that building on Monday. Whether or not they go there or not is, is a question that's gonna be addressed by the administration, I would assume. The, but the information has to be brought, so that the, the school department can take some action. Now, Ms. Aguiar's point is, is that it's a special meeting, and generally in the special meeting, you don't take up an item that is not on the agenda. However, we have a situation that has been brought to the attention of the, the school committee. We are sitting here, I, in my, my opinion, my legal opinion, is that this, the school committee taking action that is absolutely, unequivocally necessary to be taken right now, is the, is the right, uh, action to take. And that we would be, if we're gonna be criticized for taking up something that is not on the agenda, what would the criticism be if we're made aware of this situation and took no action? Bottom line is, it's my opinion that this would be, this would not be a violation of the rules. And even if it were, all it would be, would be a situation where there'd be a ratification vote taken at the next meeting.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguiar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. First item up on the agenda is-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Aguiar?
Could we also ask, the gentleman came up to talk about curriculum and laid a bunch of things out. I'd like to request from the new superintendent, a response to each of those items. Thank you.
Item 3.1 is a discussion and vote to approve. The early childhood principal job description is presented by Kristen Farias.
Good evening.
Thank you, Kristen.
No problem. So, I believe you were provided copies of both the current job description for elementary principals, as well as the proposed job description for the principal of the Early Learning Center. There are very few changes that are made to this. Generally speaking, the overall administration of a school building, many of those things are what they are, regardless of the students that are in the building. The general sort of day-to-day operations are what they are. What is different in early childhood is that this is a specialized program. So, our early childhood program at its foundation is a special education program. And so, this school is servicing students with and students without disabilities. However, 65% of the students in the building will be students on IEPs. So, the principal of the Early Learning Center, of any early childhood building that is a special education program, really needs to have an understanding of special education laws, special education procedures, particularly those that involve the transition from early intervention and community-based services into public school services. While that transition itself happens in the early childhood office and with my special education team there, we are then handing that child off and the family, and the, the work around implementing that IEP for that child to the school building. And the principal would be the person overseeing that work on the day-to-day. And so, for this, there are elements there where they need to work collaboratively with the early childhood special education department on what that relationship is, what that handoff is, from the family coming in from early intervention, and their transition into the public schools. The Early Learning Center, next year in two sites, eventually in one combined site, will house almost all of our half-day programs. And so, that means almost every single student that is transitioning to us on an IEP will be the responsibility of this principal. I don't know if you have any specific questions related to the description?
Any questions for Kristen Farias? Mr. Dias, then Ms. Pereira?
Thank you. I'll start off with a few. Thank you for coming down. So, the question I'm about to ask right now is, because I just have a few concerns, that some of the responsibilities for the proposed principal position and your position are sort of duplicated, so hopefully you can help me through that. And thank you, Superintendent, for responding to my email earlier in response to this. So, just so I have an understanding, your position was moved some time ago from small programs to large programs. Could you just explain what that is for my advocacy and for the public?
So, explain why it was moved, or what?
Yeah, that, and what the difference is between the two.
Um, I'm gonna be very honest, I don't know what the difference is between the two. I can tell you, I have been overseeing early childhood special education. As a special education supervisor, I began that role back in 2013. During the, about seven years after that, I worked very closely with the previous director of early childhood. She handled all of the programmatic pieces to early childhood. And so, enrollment screening and registration of general education peers from the community, curriculum and instruction, as well as the early childhood grants that we had at that time. When I applied for this position in 2020, what we discussed between the superintendent, the special education director at the time, and myself, was that, coming into this position, it made more sense for me to maintain the responsibilities I had as a special education supervisor for early childhood, and combine those with the director of early childhood position. We did not know at that time what the lift would be for that, and what that would truly look like. We, I took this job in July of 2020. So, the first year of this was COVID. And so, that year was not normal for anyone, and so that didn't give us a good gauge. Going into the 2021, 2022 school year, is when we really got to have a sense of, what is the lift of now essentially taking two jobs and making them one job? I did not take all of my, um, special ed supervisor responsibilities with me. I also had school-aged children at that time. That was given to the person who replaced me. I only took with me the early childhood part of that. Side note on that, at that time, there were very few special education supervisors. And so, that, while it was part of my job right at that time, what it constitutes at this time is, I carry, in addition to the director of early childhood role, a full special education supervisor caseload. So, in June of 2022, is when I made the request to have the position considered large versus small. No clear definition of what the difference was, other than the fact that the job that was previously held by the early childhood director and the job that I am doing are substantially different. The special education piece is not in the job description, if you read it. But it makes sense for continuity, as well as consistency for services for the children, both with and without special ed. To have two different people overseeing curriculum and instruction for gen ed students versus special ed students just doesn't make sense in an integrated environment. We want our students to have equal access and opportunity. And so, looking at our preschool program more holistically, it makes sense that I would do both pieces of that. And so, in June of 2022, I did make that request. The request was not approved until a full year later. And so, this is the first year that I'm actually working under it as a large program. The first three years, it remained the small. The other piece of that is, when I took this position in 2020, we had 17 preschool classrooms. We currently have 33. Our enrollment has gone from a, a capacity of 351 to a capacity of 609. In addition, our early childhood grants, which I oversee as part of the director's role, we have grants in early childhood that are actually EEC, not DESI, programs. And so, I oversee those as well. The Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant, which includes our Parent Child Plus program. When I took this grant over, we applied for some expansion, and we were able to expand that grant to service 10 additional families. That is a one-to-one model, where we have providers that work with families with children five and under in their home. So, we are now servicing 10 more families than we were when I took this position. In addition, we added a model to that called Home-Based Child Care, where we send our staff into family childcare centers to work with those providers on their program, to strengthen their skills and the work that they're doing with their students. So, that's an additional piece that the previous director did not have. In addition, in 2022, we applied for the Commonwealth Community, the Preschool Partnership Initiative Grant, and were awarded that, which we began in June of, July of 2022. So, that is a new grant that was taken on that year, where we are working in collaboration with Headstar and People in Preschool, on doing shared work with making full day, full year programming more- programming more accessible to families and being able to provide special education services in those programs.
Okay.
So the job, the director job as it was prior to my taking it is not the job that it is now.
Okay, so just to basically summarize that all up, principal's going to handle more of the day-to-day, you're going to handle the curriculum. Just a question, there's two questions for the superintendent. The, so actually, this would be actually for you. So you're going to work hand-in-hand, you're not going to report, the principal position is approved, they're not going to report to you, they're going to report directly to the superintendent, but you have more of a?
Correct. So it'll be a similar, it will be a closer relationship because the number of classrooms that are in that building and the age of the children. But right now, many of our preschool classrooms are in our current schools and overseen by the principals of those schools. And I have a close working relationship with each principal. When something is going on in preschool, they will reach out to me and we will collaborate to support the classrooms that are in the school buildings. But the classrooms are under the day-to-day supervision of the principal.
Okay. And just to confirm, you don't have an assistant director?
I do not.
Okay. And so one question for the superintendent, what's the average salary range for, if we have any assistant directors throughout the district? I'm just trying to think, can we get us?
We don't have assistant directors. You're talking about our directors, program directors?
Yes.
We don't have assistant directors. Right? No.
I'll yield for now, thank you.
Anybody have, anybody have anything? Mr. Agger.
Thank you. So just a couple of questions, I guess. So what you're saying is there's, you're currently doing the supervisor of early childhood?
So early childhood special education falls under me as the director of early childhood now, where it did not previously. I've been doing that role for the last 11 years. When I took over the early childhood department, I brought that piece with me.
So in the org chart of the special ed department, you fall under, your whole department falls under Ms. Obenchain as the assistant superintendent?
A part of my department. So my, early childhood has sort of three buckets. So there's early childhood special education, which is the transition from early intervention, it's the evaluation teams, we run two evaluation teams. We process about 350 referrals for special education for ages, children ages three to five a year. So there are two teams of psychologists, speech therapists, team chairs that do that work in my office. So that's sort of one layer of early childhood. The next layer is our public preschool program. And so that's looking at the program design, the lottery, placement of students, curriculum and instruction for preschool as an age level, as a grade level. The third piece of that is our early childhood grants. So we have two grants, over a million dollars from EEC, not from DESI, that fund some of the programs we work on for children who are not yet enrolled in school. So those are our parent-child plus programs, our home-based daycare programs, we run play and learn groups, and we're also, we also work with families of young children on getting access to resources in the community. The diaper pantry, food stabilization, those types of things, we work with families, we have staff that do community outreach, and we work with many of the local partner agencies that work with young children.
Can you clarify, I had, we had a subcommittee meeting related to this exact issue, and it was indicated at that time, it was, the title was an org chart. I believe that the org chart, maybe the superintendent can clarify, the org chart showed your position, not you personally, but your position falling under Ms. Obenchain. And I just heard you say partially, I don't know what that means.
So it, so my, I directly report to Ms. Obenchain.
100%.
So, I direct, yes, 100%, I directly report to Ms. Obenchain. I work also very closely with Dr. Curly on the teaching and learning team, looking at the curriculum and instruction piece. But for sort of sanity's sake, I sit under special education. On Ms. Obenchain's org chart, you'll see that under early childhood director, it links that there is an additional org chart that separates out what is, what lives in early childhood.
But it all falls under Ms. Obenchain's assistant superintendent, see, that's, was my point.
Yes.
You had said it was other than that, and I'm still trying to figure that out, but so at the end of the day, that's how the org chart goes. What is the percentage of children in pre-K that are on an IEP? Roughly?
Uh...
Three quarters?
65%. In this particular building, it will be 65%. I would say it's probably roughly in that range across the district. That's probably a good, I can get you an exact number, but in this building, it will be 65%.
So the majority of the situation is on the special education. The first I'm hearing of the need for this position, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe during the budget, this was on the list of either recommendations or the positions not funded. So I've never heard until this date, right now, that you were doing two jobs, the special ed supervisor and your other job. I still haven't.
Yeah. Because we merged those into one. And I can do those as one combined job. What I can't do is those and be a school principal. And that's what I've been trying to do this year, and it's just not something that's feasible.
I understand. But to the superintendent, during the budget process, this was known what we were going to do for additional classrooms. So my question is, was this presented to the committee related to that we're going to need a principal for the early childhood if we expand by five classes? That's, all we're doing is expanding by five classrooms. It's not like we're expanding by 17 classrooms.
No, this isn't an expansion. We have currently seven classrooms that are housed at Eastern Avenue, as well as five classrooms that this year were at 2501 South Main Street that are moving to Bishop Connolly.
I understand. All I'm suggesting is though, is the need for the position. So when we look at last year, you had the same number of classrooms? So we're not expanding at all?
When you say last year, which, which last? This past school year, moving into the beginning of next year? No, sir, we are not expanding. We have, oh, this current school year, I tried my best, and I'm going to be very honest, with limited success, to oversee the classrooms that were at 2501 South Main Street, as well as the classrooms that are at Eastern Avenue as their principal, in addition to being the director. It is not feasible.
And I'm not trying to criticize you at all. All I'm just saying is, taking the person outlook, it has nothing to do with you, just taking the positions and the history of what happened, is we were told a year or two ago in 2022, or whenever that thing went out, that you had taken on a lot of different things because of additional pre-K students.
Mm-hmm.
At that time, when we voted, and I think I voted for it, I'm not even sure at the time, but we voted to move your contract to a bigger salary and a different level because it was a large program. At that particular time, it was never stated to this committee or to myself that the problem was that we, you were doing the supervisor's job as well as this other stuff. So all I'm trying to figure out is, do we go back to saying we've got to, you know, streamline some of the positions because money's going to run out at some point, we just can't keep adding positions, so?
So I just want to be clear, when I made the request for the committee and the superintendent to consider the move from a small program to a large program, it never entailed anything to do with the day-to-day management of preschool classrooms or preschool buildings. It did not, when we talked about the expansion, that expansion, my early childhood special ed team doubled from one team to two teams because of the volume of students we were seeing. What that did not include was my running the day-to-day operations of any preschool classrooms. I have never done that. Building principals have always overseen the day-to-day operations of preschool as a grade level in their building. Where we got into a different situation last year running into this year is we started to put, create preschool-only buildings. And so preschool-only, when we put a preschool in a, in a school building, the principal oversees that.
I understand, I understand. Let me ask you a question. How long have we been in Eastern Avenue?
This is the second year.
So for the first year, who was in charge of the day-to-day operations of that school?
I was. And that's what, when we went into this year, we did have the conversation about whether we needed a principal. And we were still trying to figure out what was going to happen to 2501. We didn't want to come to this committee and ask for something without clearly understanding what we were asking for and why. As, this program has doubled in four years. And so trying to really figure out the logistics and the support needed for that has been challenging, particularly since we haven't had consistent space. We had Eastern Avenue, we had classrooms that were at the Boys and Girls Club, 2501 was sort of in flux. We didn't know what we needed. We tried to do it with BCBA's and have them sort of fall under me as director, but run the day-to-day. That makes no sense. It just doesn't work. The social, emotional, behavioral needs, and we have preschool teachers here, the social, emotional, behavioral needs of our children ages three to five are significant. And so those BCBA's are spending 100% of their time in classrooms being a support to teachers. They can't run the building. So with that, I have been running a good amount of it, and then I'm very fortunate that I have a team that works for me in early childhood who do not question and go where they are needed to go. And so have really had my back trying to oversee those two buildings last year and this year. But that's also pulling them away from their duties.
I understand. So the issue that I think maybe is a little communication difference, is that when we voted to move you from, up to a different section?
Yep.
We were told by the superintendent, the reason was because we increased from 17 classrooms to 33 classrooms.
Yep.
So that was clearly what we were told when we voted that. We weren't told that we, you're doing a special ed supervisor's job and the like. It sounds to me like you need some help, is the way it sounds to me. And I'm looking at it as Ms. Obenchain's the boss of that section, she should be the one weighing in on the special ed piece. This is a real issue of special ed, special education.
But it isn't. But it isn't. And I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to make sure we're clear on what we're asking for and why. The combining of early childhood special ed and the work the early childhood director did makes sense. And it is something that, with the team that's in place there now, we are able to do. What I cannot do is do that and run a building. So it isn't that I don't need help on the special ed side, I've been doing that work for 11 years. I've got that. What is making that work challenging, as well as running the grants and doing the other work, is I'm trying to be a principal. And I've been a principal, I know what that takes. I can't do both and be the support that I need to be to the children, to the teachers, to the families of the school.
I actually, I was, I was contemplating voting for this. And as tomorrow, you talk it, tomorrow I'm trying to go against it now because what is happening is, I feel we have some needs and most of the kids are in special education. So we have to have the special education assistant superintendent more involved in all of the decisions that are going on. Now, you're trying your best, you do this, and I'm not criticizing your work, I don't know your work that well, quite honestly. But when we look at, most of the kids are in special education, we need a person that's in charge of that building to be special education focused, as well as the day-to-day operations and principles.
Correct. And so we did add that to the requirements, the expectations here?
I was going to get that.
Because it wouldn't be different than like a Mrs. Shaw, principal of Stone School, who has a special education background. We definitely need Mrs. Obenchain, we need the person that the team, if the position is approved, hires to understand special education, but it does need to be a principal.
Right. So when I look at the required qualifications, the only difference that you added, or superintendent added from the regular one, is knowledge of special ed law and regulations as well as special ed-related protocols.
Yes.
That's it. Doesn't mean you've had to have experience in it, it doesn't articulate any of the other stuff that is related to, it's not, knowledge of special ed law and regulations as well as all special ed-related protocols has nothing to do with early childhood, three-to-five-year-olds that you discussed and the issue that you mentioned. It doesn't say it in the required qualifications. Then you look down to the performance responsibilities or sustaining programs to collaborate, 90% of this is all exactly the same as an elementary school principal. But I'm just thinking, it sounds like there's a bigger issue of special education, supervisor not having staff. I think there's got to be a better, a different way, personally. Now, the salary's going to be the same, no matter what, you make it a vice principal, you're probably in a similar boat, but I asked, maybe we do a teacher in charge, maybe we do something else, that, we just are not going to keep having money to keep adding $100,000 positions.
I just want to be clear that we tried this year to do BCBA's per Mrs. Farias's recommendation. Ms. Obenchain has been part of all of our conversations, we talk about this at senior staff, it's on our agendas, et cetera. We've, this year, we tried to see, all right, maybe not a principal, can we try with another role to support? If we're putting, if it's a building, right now, Mrs. Farias is listed as the principal of the building because for a DESI code, you need to have someone identified as the principal of the building. We tried to see if it would work. Mrs. Farias, at the end of the year, said, we need a principal, not a BCBA. They need to be dealing with a lot more responsibility than what a BCBA can do, which is why we are coming forth, asking for a principal for that. As far as the requirements, you're correct. Again, Mrs. Farias worked very closely, we talked about the, the special ed requirement background and what would, we didn't want to limit ourselves and what would make sense in regards to what, what are the qualifications that people have to have. But all of it was developed in conjunction with Mrs. Farias, who's in the role.
So the issue that, the issue that I have, my last point there, is at some point, we're not going to have money to keep on adding these positions. And you just said to us, you just told this whole committee that you had a BCBA in charge of a building, and I will ask you, can you please send the job description?
Not in charge of the building. I was in charge of the building.
Well, whatever you?
That person was there providing day-to-day support, because I can't be in two places at once, and this is split between two sites.
Okay. Is it in the BCBA's job description that they will be in charge of the day-to-day operation of a building?
I can't answer that.
No.
I can't.
I can, it's not. So all I'm saying is that we're saying it didn't work, but we didn't really truly try it officially because we just said, oh, we're going to try it with this. So now we're going to just add another principal to it. I understand you need help. I just don't think it's?
With all due respect, Mr. Agger, we are opening a school. You are opening Westall, there was no question that a principal would be hired for that school. In scope of size, this school is the same size as what Westall will be. It has the same number of classrooms, it will have approximately the same number of children, it actually has more staff. So there was no question when the committee voted to open Westall that a principal would be put there. This is a school. It is a school with 12, if we expand, potentially up to 14 classrooms, it has approximately 300 children and 45 staff. It is a school and it needs a principal.
And where is, can you send me the notice that you requested this at the budget time? And it was denied?
I did not request this at the budget time.
We did not.
That is the problem.
Right, but that was not my place to request this at the budget time.
But we didn't, we didn't bring it because we were trying to see if we could run those sites with support from BCBA and having Mrs. Farias oversee it.
When did you know, when did you come up with the idea that you couldn't do this? That it wasn't working? Was it just yesterday?
No, sir.
No. It was during budget time. You already knew this wasn't working. And the superintendent knew, in my opinion, because senior staff talks about it, that you said it wasn't working and you didn't present it.
I think where we struggle, and this is where we're, we continue to struggle, is we did not know, and realistically, because the committee has not voted on the PACE Center, we still do not know where these classrooms, at budget time, we did not know where they would be. We did not know. We found out just recently about Bishop Connolly and have started to do the work for that transition. The location of these classrooms and whether we could create them as a school has been constantly in flux, which makes it very difficult to make decisions about what is needed. As Superintendent Pont said, with that being known, we have tried multiple scenarios to try to figure out how to best support the sites until we could come up with a plan. It hasn't, nothing we have tried has adequately supported the staff, the children and the families for these schools. They need to have a principal that is just solely responsible for them.
Yeah, I just disagree with the, the way it went about, you didn't do it through the budget, the superintendent didn't do it through the budget, and we're going to run out of money.
Move the question.
Second.
We have a motion to move the question, any discussion?
Point of parliamentary procedure. Point of parliamentary, I believe Attorney Sade has something to weigh in on.
We're beating this to death, Mr. Agger.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr.? A motion to end debate and move a question has to be after the speaker has yielded.
I thought you did.
So when I ask you these questions, it is not to give you a hard time. It's in the framework of that, as a school committee member, we have to work together to try to come up with some of these things. Some of my concerns are quite valid, whether my committee members want to weigh in and not talk about it because they just want to go home, that's, that's up to them. But my feeling is I have legitimate, honest questions and concerns about this.
So disrespectful, Agger.
Mr. Farias, hold on, stop, stop, stop.
You are disrespectful.
I do think that you need, I do think that you need assistance. Don't get me wrong.
Hold on.
All I was trying to get to is, do we need to do it in a different manner?
No, that's not what I'm trying to get to. It's disrespectful. You're disrespectful.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lawrie, please. Mr. Agia has the floor.
So all I was saying is, I think that we need, you need some help, based on all of that stuff.
Schwarzer principle, Mr. Agia.
Hey, Ms. Lawrie, Ms. Lawrie.
So-
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. Sorry.
So the only thing I was saying is, that you do need assistance. I want to provide you the assistance, but I want to make sure it's done in the right way, with the proper vetting and all that stuff. That's all I'm asking. We have subcommittees, which you know, we had plenty of subcommittees. This issue never got brought up at our subcommittees, per se. So all I'm saying is, in the future, let's try to do it ahead of time, so we can get some of these quirks out. I do think you need support.
And I, I appreciate that, Mr. Agia. And I, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. Are there things that we could have done different? Are there things we could have brought up at different times? There are. But we've had multiple subcommittee meetings, because there have been so many moving parts to what is happening in early childhood, and the, the rate of expansion that we've had, that yet, there are some things that maybe we didn't do the way we should. And I appreciate your acknowledgement, that this is not something I can do on my own, but I do respectfully ask that you value my expertise in telling you what it is that we need.
Thank you.
And it is a principle that we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield.
Ms. Lawrie?
Well called.
Motion to move the question.
Second.
No. I have a motion, hold on. A motion to move this?
I want to ask a question.
Oh, that's right.
I got a motion to move the question, which limits debate.
Motion to move the question.
I got a motion to move the question, and it stops debate. We got to have a vote on that first.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we go right to the motion to approve this position?
Can't ask a question.
I have a motion and a second.
Point of parliamentary inquiry, do we never had a, we're moving the question, we never had a motion to move any question, we're just in discussion, so I don't believe that motion would be valid.
She's moving 3.2, Mr., um, I should have read the question, I should have read the agenda item first. I'll read that, but it kind of, she, well, went a little bit quick, but we're on 3.2 right now, folks, which is a discussion and vote to approve. The Early Learning Center principal is presented by Maria Pont. Ms. Pereira?
What we need, no.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay.
Somebody can second it.
I have a motion and a second. Please call the roll, then.
And who seconded the motion?
Mr. Agia, or Ms. Pereira?
No. Mr. Agia made the motion.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Pereira. Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Dais?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 3.3 is after we come out of, 3.3 is after we come out of executive session, Mr.-
Wait.
Hold on, hold on. Confused. We just voted on 3.1, which is the item we were discussing.
The mayor said 3.2.
Well, that was an error.
Okay, I just want to make sure-
What we were discussing is the 3.1 that goes in order.
3.1, we've got a motion to approve. Now it's 3.2. Mr. Agia is correct. Discussion and vote to approve the Early Learning Center principal is presented by, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve with a question.
Motion, do I have a second?
Seconds.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. Agia.
Can we just, after this, because this is actually approving the line item, I'd like to get an update for the whole committee on the org chart issue, as well as the budget, because I am concerned about the budget. When we add, you know, at the time, we're told we don't have enough money, you know, all this stuff, and then now we're adding $110,000 position, let's say. So I'm just curious, just, I'd like to get some sort of details about where we're at financially, and as well as the org chart for early childhood. Thank you, I yield.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Dais?
Thank you. And the reason-
Mr. Corey, glad to talk.
And the reason I voted no in the last section, because I just had a few lingering questions about the program, so I just know we had a discussion, superintendent, or if Ms. Farias wants to weigh in. I believe so, and I 100% agree, you need the, the support. No question there. I just want to ask the superintendent, what type of conversations we're had, on what other scenarios? You said you looked at multiple scenarios. What were those scenarios? Because I'm just trying to think of a more cost-effective way, besides adding two executive type of positions. I mean, maybe we could streamline it into a principal position, give Ms. Farias assistant principal position. I believe you do have principal experience, you were my principal at Tansin many years ago. But I just want to ask, what was the process, and what we looked at?
Well, Mrs. Farias already has a position, so she's not functioning as the principal. We are adding one position, not two. She already has her position. So we're asking for one position, which would be the principal of the school. We, all of this year, we went back and forth, because I asked that question. Do we actually need a principal there? Can we see how, we don't, we've never had, our preschool classrooms have been within schools. We've gotten to the point where now, they are in other facilities. Someone has to oversee them, right? So we said, we were looking at, if Mrs. Farias oversaw, this year, we tried it with the BCBA to support the school needs at each of those sites, to see if that would work. We need someone that's going to be the person, the decision-maker, for each of those sites. That person will travel between the sites to support the school. And that's why, and we've had the discussions about-
Multiple.
-what would work best, and, you know, I've asked Mrs. Farias, why a principal, why not? Because we've talked about teacher in charge. It can't be a teacher in charge, it has to be listed. It's got its own code, it's got to be listed with a principal for the school.
I yield, thank you.
Mr. Corey?
I just want to say that this whole process, from the beginning, has been very complicated. But I place my trust in the central administrators, who have really looked at this extremely closely, and all have a, a wealth of experience in our school district for many years. Ms. Farias was a principal at one time, and I worked with her on that team. And I have to say that analyzing this position for early childhood, the numbers have grown, the demographics have changed phenomenally since COVID. And this is another COVID reaction to what's happening with the demographics to the students in our district. And our central team has such a wealth of experience, and I'm sitting here, listening, and I'm, and I'm, I think it's just disrespectful to the central team's experience and commitment to the, to the improvement in the special needs program, which I see viably is going on as we speak. Our special needs programming is improving year to year. It has never really been that good for a long time, but it's getting better. And we must trust Ms. Farias, our superintendent, Ms. Obenchain, we must trust them to lead the charge forward, and I place my trust in them. They have a firm handle on the numbers. They know what's going on, and I believe our budget can sustain an extra position with a principal. With that, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Just a question on the, well, two comments. One is, superintendent said we can't do a teacher in charge, and I disagree with that. You're the current principal. We could hire a teacher in charge to run the day-to-day operations, if you stayed the principal, correct? We could, I'm not saying you recommend it.
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm going, I am not comfortable continuing to be listed as the principal of the building, because I just cannot be-
But I'm saying theoretically, theoretically, you don't necessarily need to-
I don't know the answer to that.
The other one is the, so when I was mentioning the issue of special education numbers, so do you know roughly how many children leave the pre-K, and they go into a substantially separate classroom? Is the number extensive, or is it, is that going to be part of the principal's role? Because we're discussing whether the principal of the school has, like, to say whether they, children go into a substantially separate, is it drastic?
Yep. So the classrooms that are housed at the Early Learning Center, between Eastern Avenue and Bishop Conley, are our half-day programs. Those children are not heading to kindergarten. They will exit either Eastern Avenue or Bishop Conley, and transition into one of our full-day programs that are in our school buildings already. The Bishop Conley and Eastern Avenue site contains both substantially separate and integrated preschool classrooms. We make that decision, sort of, we do our very best to give all kids access to inclusive opportunities. Does that mean that they all go that route? No, it doesn't. We have a large number of children with pretty significant needs, that do head into kindergarten in substantially separate programs. In collaboration with Ms. Obenchain and the team of supervisors, they have really worked in the school buildings for next year, to create the GROW program, which gives us a new opportunity to have a more clearly defined partial inclusion program for our children who, transitioning out of preschool, we have concerns about their ability to access and be successful in a large kindergarten classroom. And so we're hopeful that with this program, we're going to continue to reduce the number of children heading into kindergarten in substantially separate programs. And that's, you know, under Ms. Obenchain's charge. That has been a really big focus of our department.
If I could just ask that somebody send us the numbers on that?
Yep.
Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll on 3.2.
Need a motion?
I don't have a motion in a second, yet?
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 3.3 will come up after executive session. Do we have a reason to go into executive session, Mr. Sade?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., need a motion?
I think, and when I'm looking at the agenda, like, 3.3 clearly has to come after it. Like, I don't know why the request is not 3.3 and then 4, but it's listed here for the adification of the public, so I make a motion that we move 3.3 to be appropriate with the agenda to the end.
That's fine. I have a motion and a second. Deb, call the roll.
Who seconded it? Is it?
Uh, Bobby.
Bobby.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.